Jamie, you're good? Good morning. Welcome to the Select Board Subcommittee Meeting on Brooks Academy. Before we even start, because there's so many different people representing so many different things here, if we could just go around the table and everybody can say what their name is and what their position is.
Peter?
Peter Hughes, Finance Committee.
Anita Dusset, President of the Howard Historical Society.
Scott Norm, Finance Committee.
Lynn Zalazak, Chair, Brooks Academy Commission.
Don Howell, Select Board, and I'm chairing the meeting.
Jeff Handler, Select Board.
Joe Powers, Town Administrator with staff, and staff will identify themselves as well.
Megan Eldridge, Assistant Town Administrator and ADA Coordinator.
Sean Libby, DPW Facilities Maintenance Manager.
Okay, thank you, everyone. The agenda's pretty straightforward. There's two things that I'd like to be able to discuss here. I'd like to stay on point with those two things. We're at a point where the building is substantially closed. The public can't get into it at all. So, the first discussion point is going to be, what the near-term objective is to be able to get a key in the door and allows people to use whatever portion of that building that we can get to use. The second point, second discussion point's going to be, well, actually, it'll, that will spill into a discussion about the lift, what that would look like. The bigger discussion is towards the end where we have to discuss the endpoint for the building, what it's going to take to complete it, how much money that's going to take, what time, and what individual milestones we have to hit to be able to pull that off. So, let's start with the first one, the near-term objectives. Again, that has to do with, we're at the point now where, as I understand it, we have not gotten a waiver from the state, for whatever reason, but that's where we sit. And so consequently, the public's not allowed that building. Would that be right, Joe?
Correct. Mr. Chairman, if I could, I think you nailed it. Item A, near-term objectives, and item B are co-mingled and necessary. So, the town is going before the Architectural Access Board on September 9th, and that is the hearing on, basically, giving us temporary access to the building absent a lift, if I've said that roughly right.
Yes.
Thank you.
What date was that?
Say again?
September 9th.
September 9th. And we'll be able to get into more detail on that as it relates to item B. But, Mr. Chair, as you've stated, with the building closed right now, what the Architectural Access Board has indicated to our vendor, Spencer Preservation Group, is that the board will be looking for the town to demonstrate a plan for access to that building while we are waiting for the limited-use lift to be installed. The question of access centers around the fact that we have, I'm going to refer to it as an ancient chairlift, because it goes back to the late 20th century. So, that, the chairlift that's there is inoperable, and I believe Spencer Preservation Group was hoping to rely upon that as an access point for the second floor. We're no longer able to do that. But in conversations with Spencer Preservation Group, what they had suggested back in our meeting in June about the upcoming hearing, they had suggested that the town might want to produce a video in partnership with the Historical Society that would show, on the first floor, what exhibits are on the second floor, and then that would account for access. We, the town, don't agree with that approach. What we've indicated to Spencer Preservation Group and what we'll present to the Architectural Access Board, here I'm referred to as AAB, if everyone's okay with that, is that if the Historical Society is allowed, and we, the town, would want them to be allowed, to reestablish exhibit space on the first floor, and if we recognize that there is no present exhibit space on the second floor, then there's no need for access. No access, you know, nothing would occur on the second floor unless and until we have the lift. Looking in the direction of my team, did I misstate anything in that regard? So, the near-term objective is, and I think this is the best time to talk about it with this group, is looking to the Historical Society to see if you think you can accomplish between, say, now and Sep- September 9th, the establishment of exhibits on the first floor. If you do, that can be opened for that purpose, and we would certify that there are no exhibits in the short term pending the lift on the second floor.
Can we, can we just declare the second floor closed?
That was going to be my question.
Essentially, that is what we'd be doing.
No, I mean, without trying to-
Is there currently, excuse me, say, is there currently, Anita, anything up there on display that the public would-
No.
No.
Okay, so, you, you would be able to say, just flat out, that we don't currently have any displays there, we're not going to anticipate any until we get to the last agenda item getting completed? So, okay, so, I think that would be our approach ultimately. Does everybody agree?
And there's nothing in the basement, right, that the public would get to at the moment?
No.
No.
So, you just say it's the first floor only, and that's it?
Correct. And that is the messaging that we've provided preliminarily to Spencer Preservation Group. So, they're aware of this concept.
Okay, so, upstairs and the basement are both fallow. They're, they're not being used.
So, once, so once this hearing happens on the 9th, if they say, yes, it's an okay plan, then can the, can the building be open for the first floor, like, immediately?
I think that's the plan.
I don't know about immediately, but they, as soon as they grant allowance, we would do it. So, yes.
So, sometime in the fall?
That's our belief, our intent, and our hope.
Okay, but sometime in the fall?
Correct.
For instance, yeah, okay.
Or late summer, perhaps.
Well.
Meteorologically-
And Joe, the, I guess the question is, have you aligned who it is that you want to be at that September 9th hearing to represent us?
So, immediately, we told Spencer Preservation Group that the Facilities Maintenance Manager and I will be available. I believe they still do them remote? Yeah.
Yes.
State organizations typically don't do public hearings. Spencer Preservation Group said there may be value in having advocates from the town attend, we certainly wouldn't object to that. But what the AAB is looking for is, what's your plan pending the lift? And that would be the plan that we convey.
Okay. And, the reason I ask that question is, I don't want the AAB to misconstrue, lack of abundant attendance on our part is somehow meaning that we're not that interested in pursuing this. They, they should not get that message ultimately.
And if I can build on that, we, Sean, Megan and I have already conveyed that to Spencer Preservation Group and asked Doug and Lynn at Spencer Preservation Group to actively present that to the AAB until that time. We've told them that there is an amazing level of support, interest, and concern about this project, so, and making reference to this meeting, I think is going to go a long way as well. And they see the roster of who's been present.
I'd like to be there too, if possible.
I was, I was going to say that ultimately, after we walk out of this meeting, that we can follow up on who it is that wants to be, participate in, in that call.
Yeah, so, first, it is a public meeting.
Yeah.
So, anyone can participate in that regard, but certainly, I would be identifying representatives of town government, representatives of committees that relate to town government, and representatives of the Historical Society as the primary tenant.
And I would argue that the people that we have here today, which is, they were brought together specifically as stakeholders, that all of you are absolutely invited, and we'll keep you posted on what the mechanism is, the Zoom call and the credentials and that kind of stuff. All right, is it, want to move into the lift part, or is that an extricate?
So, that's where we're at, as far as the lift. I believe the best statement I can make regarding the lift is, we do not yet have funding for the lift.
Right.
So, that, to me, is items B and C. We, the town, need money.
So, can I just ask a question?
Sure. Peter.
Do we have, is the architect that's been working on that, or wherever that is, still active? Do we still have a contract with some architect or somebody who would be designing the lift, for instance, or is that separate?
Separate.
So, we don't have an architect?
No.
Okay. Did we end up having a, what did you call it, Joe, an owner's rep, an owner's project manager or something at one point in time? I remember when-
We did on the, on the, pardon the expression, the lift of the building and the foundation work, given the size, scope, and magnitude of it.
Right.
Did have an owner's project manager. They completed their process and their contract. But going back to the lift itself, could you talk about what's necessary for the, quote, "design" of the lift?
Well, we, to answer your question about the OPM, we, I guess in preparations of what we had hoped of getting funding in the May annual town meeting, we actually went out and solicited for OPMs to bid on this next phase. We got it, we were ready to execute it, and then we found out we weren't going to get the funds, so we dropped that OPM. The OPM process will have to happen as soon as we get the money, ask for the OPM. Once we identify the OPM, they will help us identify a new architect.
Okay, so, so I just keep going, a couple, excuse my ignorance on the topic. Are there any funds left over from what was previously allocated from town meeting, free cash, whatever, for the, anything on that project?
We have, we currently have $690,000 out of the CDC funds.
Is it designated for a specific purpose?
Yes, siding and windows.
For what?
Siding and windows.
Okay, so, nothing to do with the elevator?
Nothing to do with the elevator.
Okay. And, so, does anybody have any idea what the elevator would cost?
I've got an estimate, so up to $350,000.
Yeah, okay.
If I could say, $350,000 for the-
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
We can't shorthand on the record.
And then elevator would go from, for all three floors, in essence, right? Hydraulic elevator?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, you need a pit?
Exactly.
Okay, so, it's really four floors, and you get done with it?
I don't think the pit, from what I've seen out of the designs, they don't go all the way down, it's not a full-
Okay, I mean, I've been in some that are six feet high, but I mean, you know, whatever. Okay, so, we, we need to get funding for that, obviously. How about, you said there's, there's money left over for siding and painting. Can that, can that work get started?
As I said at a, a meeting approximately in May, at a Select Board meeting, we literally have to dig down, so it doesn't make sense to do, have a contract separate, we'll end up paying more money for the siding, and end up paying, having to rip down siding that we just had repaired. So, it makes absolutely zero construction sense.
So, okay, so if I understand it right, then what you're saying is, until we get the funding for the elevator and get that work, at least identify where the elevator's going and what has to be, you know, modified to accommodate that, there's nothing we can really do with the building.
My recommendation is, is we do it all, all at once.
No, I understand that, yeah.
It, I'd like to add to that, because that's, that leads to a wholly separate discussion. If that's the deal, then I would presume, and I'm going to defer to you over this, that during that period of time, when that work is going on, that we're back again to the point where the building is not going to be open for the general public for that period of time, that interval.
I would imagine that, yes.
Okay, so, we, we'd want to plan to make sure that that's the least disruptive to the operation. If we can get the first part done, and plan on, you know, when we could start the construction and close the building, so it doesn't disrupt the actual displays, and I'm sure that there is certain seasons and times that are more, more disruptive than others. I mean, Linda?
Well, there's also a lot of what to be done on the interior of the building, so it's not just sweep a room and stick some paintings up for a display. There are, if you go through that building, which I was in yesterday, there are still, I know your people repaired some of the walls downstairs in those two rooms, but there are walls upstairs that are about in the same shape from taking a building that was like this, and it's now like this.
Settled.
There, the whole raising of that corner and leveling out, there's extensive work to be done in the interior of the building, and at this point, we're having, you know, so it's not just this, you know, just to make sure, it's not just the siding and a roof and an elevator, it's also all the rest of the stuff that has to be done. We're, we're not clear on what has to be done for ADA. We've got a pole in front of the door in the basement, which has to be rectified. The pole is that, there's a door, goes into the new section, and there's a pole right there, which now is against building code and blah, 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 and somebody in a handicap couldn't get through, so that also has to be repaired. I mean, there's a chunk of stuff that I'm, I'm just concerned that whatever RFP gets put together over here by Megan and gets out there, doesn't have all the rest of the repair work in it, because then we'll be in the same pickle. We'll have a building that looks nice on the outside and looks like hell inside.
Well, that's what we're anticipating, that's why we're here.
That's good.
Near-term, how can we get it open, and whether that's an impediment for the, the interior, and what needs to be done to patch it up to at least get it open. But, we're talking about the second item being all-in. How much is it going to cost, all-in, to fix everything and get the project completed in a manner that allows it to operate every, you know, all throughout the building, and the whole building's done, inside and out?
Is there any money remaining in Article 47 from the 2023 town meeting?
No.
So, that $300,000 that was in there is now gone?
Which article? The sinking fund or the?
I think it was the sinking fund one.
There is money left there.
So, like, $300,000?
Yeah, that's what I'm holding for, the type of things we're talking about, the interior.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's not being left out of the equation.
Sean, is the building insulated?
Yeah, actually, we just, part of the sinking fund money, we just had Rise Engineering go in and we put in $10,000 worth of insulation.
And it's all done?
All done.
Okay.
All done, and we also put in heat pumps.
And I'm not, you mentioned roof, I'm not sure I heard that before, but is there a roof in the plan?
Yeah, roof is in the plan. Roof, the cupola's was separate, these were all separated out when originally done, now they're all together. So, it includes the columns up front, the decking.
So, it sort of sounds to me like we need a comprehensive project plan.
Yeah, punch list of stuff.
Well, not a punch list, but, but actually, you know, a schedule and a plan, that's, these are the things we need to get done, and then how much roughly it's going to cost, and what's our next chance to go get some money, Joe? Is it, are we still thinking about a fall town meeting, or?
I certainly am still thinking about a special in the fall. The board may have a conversation as early as August about that.
Do we think there will be some free cash available then to-
That is the ongoing effort of our interim treasure collector, for certain.
Okay, so, so do we-
We're still looking, if I may, we're still looking at a late November date, just to account for all of the elections that's going on for our town clerk.
Yeah, sure. Thanksgiving.
Yeah, we're still on track for, correct, late November 2024 special.
So, do we think we could get a plan together in the next, I don't know, 45 days or something, and lays out all these things that need to get done, and what timeframes they are, and what, what the cost might be? So, that when we go, so we're ready to go to a town meeting and say, and I'm making this up, you know, we need like a million dollars, you know, to do this?
That's what the second agenda item is, that's exactly what we're-
Oh, okay. I didn't get the agenda, so.
Oh, that's exactly what we want to do in that-
Chair, if I could?
Yeah.
I would just ask our Facilities Maintenance Manager to articulate-
Did you?
The gesture you just made, because I'm going to say, we have a plan, but Sean, I'll defer to you on the document you have in front of you.
It was on the last year's capital request.
Okay.
So, maybe we could dust it off and share it or something?
Yeah, I was just going to say, dust it off and make sure everybody has a copy of it.
And we need the details, because the capital plans that are put into any kind of a meeting agenda, there don't have any detail behind them. You know, there's limited detail, it just says this, $100,000, you know, new, new fence somewhere. There's the detail, because we're very interested in the detail, because I think that the Historical Society felt like they were somewhat left out of this process before. We want to make sure that we understand exactly what's going to happen, and all the punch list items are on there, and that, you know, we, as a request, we'd like to see things like the RFP before it goes out, to make sure that everybody, everything's in there, you know, another set of eyes, Megan, I trust you. But I, you know, in God, we trust, all others pay cash. We want to see this stuff before it hits the streets, and then find out that, oh, no, the cupola's not in there. Oh, no, this isn't-
Linda, if I might, that's why we're here, so that everybody is moving forward, is going to know what's happening.
That's what I want to make sure, whilst I'm saying this, is that that's our expectation, regardless of what, but that's our expectation involved.
And it's ours, too. The board, the town administrator, everyone is committed to making sure that going forward, everything that we need to have happen in that building is articulated, and the stakeholders understand what that looks like, and it's done in a way that you could put an RFP work statement together, so that the respondent knows exactly what he's doing.
Yeah, well, yes or no? I mean, it sounds to me like you're looking for specifications, and that's why we're hiring an architect. Architect will probably uncover-
Yeah, but they're going to develop something, to riff off of. That's what we're paying them for.
Yes.
So, there will be something available, it isn't available now, and you're not going to develop it, but my point is, it will be available.
Right, because how could an architect come up with a, some kind of cost structure or something, if they don't know what you want, and therefore the contractors, all of a sudden, find out that, I mean, the floors are wrecked, we'd like the floors refinished, it's got to be in there.
We're trying to avoid that this time around.
Yes, we'd like to avoid that this time around.
I think the taxpayers need to know what they're signing up for.
Yeah.
As we go forward, there's been enough discussion about this particular property, that I think it's our, our chance to come up with a comprehensive plan, fully involved, fully comprehensive, that would say, okay, to our best ability, we think it's going to take this long, cost this much money, assuming we have the funds, and give the taxpayer the chance to say, okay, I understand that, I want to support that in the building, or no, I don't. I mean-
Absolutely, and frankly, I know Jeff and I are committed to seeing this thing through, so that it gets done. I'm pretty sure that the board will unanimously agree to that, but that's really the destination point, and this is the focus article for that town meeting, that this is exactly what we're calling it for.
So, it sounds like we also need a date to have this planning completed by.
And who's going to complete it? I'm looking for the throat to-
That's why I said upfront, we need a milestone plan about what happens, when it happens, and who's responsible for making it happen, but-
Who's a point person on this, by the way?
Town Administrator.
Okay.
Could I just ask one, one thing that's often asked at the beginning of a capital project, is, is there any change in the way the building is used, envisioned, or is it going to be used exactly as it has been in the past?
I think that's a broader conversation between the Select Board as the owner of the building and any tenants.
Right. But before you start designing even a renovation project, you want to know that, right? I mean, I imagine the answer is no, but no change, but-
Mr. Chairman, if I could, Joe? The answer for me is maybe, in the sense that it, it remains a municipal building, and there's going to be any number of municipal purposes that are there. There's been an ongoing relationship with a private party, the Historical Society, that, to my knowledge, the Select Board, and certainly in our administration, has any intention whatsoever of changing. But to put a fine point on it, it's a municipal building that's under the spin of control of the Select Board. What we're doing is making sure, if I may say it this way, that, that 100-something year-old building exists for at least another 100-something years, as much as possible for all the uses. So, if there's going to be change, it would go through a Select Board meeting process, but at this time, administration doesn't have any, I'm not aware of any of the Select Board, and I know we have an eager tenant that wishes to get back into their, to their exhibits and their, and their portion of the building.
And Scott, further to your question, 1988 town meeting, by a two-thirds vote, approved this building as, rather than being occupied in general sense, as a museum, and created the Brooks Academy Museum Commission, and moved forward under that guise. The fact of the matter is, it's really difficult for a museum to tell you what it's going to look like in 10 years, in terms of displays, but broadly speaking, that building sits there for the purpose of providing a museum for the town's heritage. So, and that will remain the focus.
I can probably fill it a little bit more about that. Prior to this, without an elevator, we had really very limited access to the second floor for exhibits. So, the plan, which has been done about four times, we have all the records over at the society, there's been at least four different studies of this building, but what we're working on now is, the first part was the foundation, so that we could climate control that, make sure that's the RFP, and so the, so that we could move our collection to the basement, into the new foundation area, therefore freeing up a huge chunk of the second floor, which really hasn't been available for exhibits, because it's had all of our collection in there. We've really, and we've had office space on the first floor, so the idea is, collection moves down to the basement, first floor and two of the rooms, about half of the second floor are exhibits, and public meeting spaces, lectures and the like, and then there is another half of the second floor that will become workspace, offices, and the like.
So, all these design, I guess they're minor changes within the same mission-
They all look alike.
-are already envisioned and would be included in the RFP?
Yep, and, and all these, if you look through all of them, they all look alike.
And lest we leave this room without understanding that they're homework assignments, it's, there's more than just the, what the timeline looks like to put out an RFP or the request for the waiver. You folks in Brooks Academy Commission probably should put a pen to paper, because you're looking for certain things, but that's fine, but you can't make those things happen on your own.
No.
So, those things have to go to administration, at least to review what that looks like. And so, the Select Board knows what's being asked, and by the way, ultimately, the townspeople when we're asking for money. So, that, for the lack of a better way of characterizing it, right now, that's a wish list that, that we have to align with our capabilities of implementing.
I'm perfectly happy to take the wish list that we've developed, and, you know, right now, it's just kind of sketchy, it's, you know, but make it clearer and send it on, I guess, to Megan and Sean.
Can you folks commit to doing that before the end of August, so the-
Sure, that could be done probably in a week.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I'd just ask, if you could send that to me, and I can distribute to staff, if that's appropriate.
Okay, so, we'll put our wish list together, we've got our wish list.
I think we'd like it, too.
Absolutely.
Pardon?
So, can I ask a question? If we had, and somebody refresh my memory, if we had the free cash at the spring town meeting, annual town meeting, and the capital plan for this had been approved, which I forget the number, somebody remember that number, would that have covered all these items we're now talking about, or only part of them?
Only part of them.
Okay.
Did not include the climate.
So, so if we had gone and had the free cash and voted that, we'd be sitting here saying, okay, we can do this, this, and this, but we can't do this, this, and this. And so, from what you're trying to do in a comprehensive scale, it's almost, you know, like we were visionaries, right, that we didn't have the money, and now we might have it in the fall, to have a chance to say, let's do a comprehensive plan on what it takes and fund it to get this thing done. So, in theory, if we do this, you know, around Thanksgiving thing, then starting the first of the calendar year, we can really dig in and get going on this thing, right?
Yes.
And do we think that's a two-year process? I'm just making it up, I have no idea.
That's, and again, that's our third thought, because getting this going doesn't get the building completed, I mean, it just gets us to the point where we have-
There's a lot of stuff that's got to get done. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that has to get done.
Yeah, and I don't think, I don't want to mislead anybody, in my mind, unless somebody's going to contradict me, in my mind, we're not looking this within a year. I mean, this is, it's going to take probably a couple, maybe two and a half years to actually get to the point of the town meeting, have the funding, put a contract out, and then start, you know, work on it, so, I mean, it, it is a process, it's going to be a while.
Sean, how's the electrical system over there?
Probably going to need to be upgraded if we're adding this other equipment.
Including, including the service coming in, or just in the building, sort of?
Building.
Okay.
Within the building is, it's still got a lot of old wires running through it.
Your charitable-
Nob and tube, or?
Yeah, I was going to say, nob and tube wires.
Oh, boy.
And, and is there like an alarm system, or a fire alarm system, and? There is. Does the building need to be sprinkled?
It is.
Okay.
Can I back up a second, Sean?
Yes.
I mean, the, the second part of this question isn't really up to you to answer, but whose idea was it to put a, I guess it's a floor joist to support that pole? That pole's not a pole, that pole's supporting the foundation, I mean, supporting floor.
That was in the design for the foundation, I was not involved in that, I don't know how it got missed, but-
It's there.
Yeah, but that's what I'm backing up to, is I'm hoping that somebody could look into who is responsible for being there. I'm sure that you guys didn't design that pole in there. That it's an impediment. And it's an impediment we're going to have to pay for. And I'm pretty sure the townspeople would be, would feel a lot better about everybody's efforts here if we pursued who it was who was responsible for that. That's collateral, because that's not going to get the building open sooner or later. But Lynn is right, pole's got to go.
Or the door has to be moved.
Or the door moved. I'm not sure which would be cheaper to do, so.
Not either.
Move the building three feet.
Well, I think that as we talk about the building being all this, two years probably out, that the construction is finished and blah, 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 it's going to take us a year to put that building back together. Because all of the exhibits are apart. We've got to now then are going to have to figure out exhibits, get them together. It's not like that's going to happen overnight.
That's exactly why I didn't, especially with this being recorded. That's exactly why I wanted to get it out there, that people should not be expecting that we're waving a magic wand and by the end of the year, this thing is going to be done. Which is also why we have that first agenda item. What does it look like to get the building open in some guise? To be able to semi-operate, and then, long-term, what needs to be done? And I'm pretty sure that, I mean, I anticipate that, I'm pretty sure everybody else did. Is that us getting it done doesn't get the building fully open either, because then there are displays and exhibits that have to be done, so.
But going back to what Joe said in the beginning, we need to ensure that the society has something that can be there for that September 9th date. Or that can be guaranteed, that could be used to open the building to satisfy what is necessary to get that certificate.
I think you, if I could interpret that, your comments. I think what we're looking to do is allay any fears that we're going to be public displays in the basement or the second floor. And that what that would look like as a request is, can we go into the main floor without anything else being exhibited anywhere else?
So I'm going to try and articulate it in a certain manner, and I'll look to Sean to correct. We're in front of the AAB because there is no code level or statutory level of access for the entire building. That's why we need the lift. So far, so good? If the building is going to be opened to the public absent a lift, that's where we're going before the AAB on, if we want to access the building. So there's an inherent assumption in that, that we should all put out there, is that we all want the building to be open on the first floor to some degree as soon as possible. Correct?
That's what was driving you.
Yeah.
Can I just ask for a clarification, though? With the kind of work we're talking about doing, which is basically, once you start, and let's assume success, we get funded this fall and we start January 1st of next year, it almost sounds like you've got to shut the thing down to get the work done.
I said that upfront.
Huh?
I said that upfront about.
So I think we're only talking about is a short window where it might be open on the first floor for four months or something?
Well, remember, that's all that has been open, basically, is in the summertime.
If we could align this so that their busy point is when it's allowed to be open, and then we shut it down and start doing work, that would be ideally the way of going.
I mean, does it really give us any benefit to be open in the fall?
If I could, I'd like to finish the thought.
Yeah.
So, we just had some level of agreement that we're looking to have the building open for the Historical Society's exhibits. To do that, what we'd need to demonstrate on September 9th is, what does the exhibit space look like on the first floor? Because we will testify that this is it. If you let us access this building, this is it in the short term. There's nothing upstairs on the second floor, there's nothing on the basement. The only people that would be accessing would be facilities maintenance for ongoing project work. So far, so good?
Good, but I don't think the, I don't think we have to do anything physically. I think we verbally can tell that to the board. And say, this is our intent. That way, we're not wasting time setting up all these things for not to be used till next summer.
Thank you. I was motivated by Spencer Preservation Group's recommendation. If you did a video showing what the exhibits are upstairs, and you broadcast that. I agree with Sean. When we go before them on September 9th is, look, we want to open the building to the public. That Historical Society will use their exhibits on the first floor and only the first floor. Once the lift, construction project moves forward, yes, we would have to shut down for a period of time for the installation of the lift, I would imagine. But to break it down, what we're looking to do at the AAB on September 9th is to say, we don't have anything other than the first floor. That's all the tenant is looking for, that's all the committee is looking for, that's all the town is looking for. So please grant us access to that building for that purpose.
So might I suggest that when you do the video of the second floor, you might want to do a video on the first floor as well?
There are no exhibits set up.
Correct.
Well, I thought you were just trying to demonstrate there's nothing up there.
We're going to testify to that.
Okay, so, but if you made a video of the first floor during construction, when the place is shut down, we get a list on the town website. If people want to see what used to be in there, what is in there, we could have a little video that says, here's Brooks Academy.
Coming soon.
If I may, Mr. Chair, yes. If we're granted access to the building and the Historical Society saw value in setting up the exhibit space and, can we say taping anymore, Jamie? What's the vernacular now it is?
Recording.
Recording, and while it's closed, say, here's a virtual tour. Absolutely.
But this meeting was not designed to have that discussion.
For the purposes of this discussion, and I think where you were going, Lynn, was, for September 9th, the town, certainly through the three agents you see here, will be testifying that the ask of the town is access to the building for the first floor while we wait for the lift to be installed for full access.
Excellent.
Will the ramp that is there now be adequate for that public access?
I don't know. I'm hoping not to open that can of worms.
Well, just, I mean, we're saying public access, you have to have, you know, mobility access. So we won't need to be then come back and be told we can't have it because we have to put a second egra, blah, 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 blah.
No, that, that.
That will suffice for this. Thank you.
Correct. For the record, that was our ADA compliance officer. Thank you, Megan.
That's why I was looking to Megan to ask that question. That is, that would that, you know, would they come back with, well, you have to have a second ramp put in? Well, then that's a hootie-doo, and that costs $50,000, and that kind of kiboshes the whole thing. So I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
I would hope that our presentation has some clarity that we are not going to open up second and third fronts of discussion.
I hope not.
So, I mean, we have never talked about pointing out other things that they might want to deny us for, and they have not suggested that either.
I agree with that, and I just wanted to know if that was, did our compliance officer think that that was a possibility that might be an issue? And she's saying she doesn't think so, so I'm happy.
So our focus at that meeting will be the lift.
The lift.
Okay, now, as to Peter's thought, again, at some point, there's going to be a list that you guys are going to produce, you're going to submit it to administration. We're going to have to decide, I mean, in a perfect world, I mean, even with a family budget, it is like.
I get it.
I would want everything I could possibly get. I want a better car. But we have to start aligning that in terms of our priorities. But we can't do that until you develop a list, and then administration gets to look at what's feasible within the context of it. And we'll point out that we left it in the capital plan for what we had agreed to. So what we're talking about is fueling that capital plan in this same year with money. So if it exceeds that, that's another story. But I mean, we've already passed step one.
But I think the money is more than we had anticipated, at least in that capital plan.
No, I get that, but I just wanted to bring that up, is that the town meeting approved the capital plan that had certain things in it that we could possibly fund if we find that we're in that position and we can call the meeting. So it's not like we're starting at zero. But I don't want to leave the room without everybody understanding who's got to do what and when. So the list is important, and I'm hoping the commission and.
The commission will.
We'll have a list to you within, I'd say, what's today, Wednesday? You will have a list by the middle of next week.
Okay, I mean, it's more important to me, and I'm pretty sure to Jeff and the rest of the board, that it's what you want, because you're not, we're not going to be able to implement anything. So it's not about speed, it's about comprehensiveness.
Yes, it is.
Sean, do you have a list from previous time of what you think needs to be put in there?
Yes.
Can you send that to me?
Sure.
Thank you.
Jeff?
That would be something I can discuss with them, too.
Jeff? Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the thing that pops into my mind is, is there a timeline compression between the list, the architect, the architect completing the ask, the timeline, and the funding that would be required to then be able to go to a fall town meeting? Just wondering how long an architect would take to be able to put this together.
We don't have the money for the architect, that'll come out of that town meeting.
That'll come, thank you.
So the courses you're going to get is?
A plan.
Yes.
And that's where I was confused.
Monetizing that through the contract is another story.
Yep.
So basically, what we can get through by town meeting is going to be a comprehensive plan, and then an ask for more money.
With a good estimate about what that might cost, plus the.
But no RFPs, no architect, no OPM at that point?
We're going to get as close to a real number as we can without actually having a contract for the people who are going to develop the real plan.
I'm just trying to understand the timeline, because by the time an arch, you know, if town meeting happens in November, by the time an architect is picked, that's going to be two, three months, so you're going to have to advertise and blah, blah, blah. And then it's going to be, they're going to take three, four months to do something. We're now into the summer.
Which is exactly what we had discussed, and that's why Jeff's question was an excellent question. It flushes out what I said earlier.
Now, we got to get.
No one should anticipate that by next year, they're walking into a beautifully redone building. That is not going to happen. But if we have a plan that includes everybody that should be included, and we have some sort of process that we've developed, and we have the town meeting, we're on our way. I mean, you can't change the procurement requirements to go to comp buys and all that kind of stuff. And you're not going to speed up the architect coming up with a developed plan. But we can get to the point where all that starts happening, and we're not there right now. We're at the point where we're sitting around looking at a building that's locked.
Are we going to look at, I mean, because part of this is, there is work that, some work has to be done in series, blah, 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 blah. There is other that can be done in parallel. So if we're coming up with a plan, what is the potential to start drafting that RFP for a new architect, so that you're ready to go, so that we're not looking at Thanksgiving, and now we're going to start the process of writing an RFP? I mean, can we start, because you have nothing else to do, Megan, I know. But we've got RFPs in-house. Is there something you could just take the copy and start changing it? Granted that there's going to be stuff not in there, like what we're looking for them to do, but getting that, so at least we're ready to then drop in what we want, and the RFP is good to go, rather than doing it in a series? I mean, this is the planning aspect.
Jeff?
Yes.
Thank you.
However, we, the series would tie to a discussion perhaps in August with the select board about said special town meeting. There would need to be a conversation probably late August, early September with the treasurer-collector on the status of free cash. Because none of that happens without that. And as we progress towards that, we always prep in advance in anticipation of funding. So for the annual, we talk in April, April, May, and certainly by June of, you have the funding, or you're going to get the funding, be ready once funding is available.
Okay.
We do that same process.
I want to keep everybody's attention focused on September 9th, however. Because all of this other stuff has various timelines that need to be aligned with each other in whatever fashion. But as I understand it, I mean, you folks would want to be in the building in the tourist season, and the operation that is likely to be closed down in order for them to accommodate the commencement of the bigger.
And we understand, we understand that.
As long as everybody walks out of the room with that understanding is that we're going to be able to temporarily do something to be able to get something going. But that's not, that doesn't look like the building's completed and you're going to use it year-round, because it isn't going to happen for probably a couple of years.
And we're trying to be careful, you know, Sean has asked us, as you put things back, don't put them in front of the windows. Because they have to get to the windows. So we're trying to be conscious of if we're bringing stuff out here and trying to reset some things up, not in front of a window. Give you ample room to get to those. So he's already been great on giving us some.
When the bigger work happens, there's going to be more than that involved, because he's going to have to, what is it, plaster?
All plaster, no?
Yeah, so it's got to, that's the last work, it's stripped out of that.
So Donna, it might be helpful, if someone just puts together a two or three-page scope of work as to what we think we're going to do to that building? Just so everybody's sitting around this table at some point can say, yeah, we concur with that, so we're trying to get done?
I think there needs to be follow-up with people who are part of that action plan and what part they're responsible for. Yeah. But I can't tell you what that looks like right here, because I'm pretty sure I'm going to take it home in my dining room and start working on it.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, what staff heard was, yes. We'll build off of that, yes.
And then we'll be working off the same exact plan, everybody. So there isn't any misunderstanding about, well, they said, and he said, or she said. So, I mean, we're walking out of this room with a commitment to actually try to get this done in two phases, which is really all I wanted to accomplish here today.
Can I ask a question?
Neither, sure.
After this meeting on the 9th, would it be a possible good idea to try to all of us get back together again? The same group, go over what happened on the 9th, if people couldn't make it or whatever, or make a discussion of exactly, now you have our list, now you've gone and met before that committee, would it be worth it to have this kind of a meeting again?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, this isn't a one-off. I anticipate we'll get back together again.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Have the discussion about where we are and where we need to be.
Okay, thank you.
I was anticipating or assuming that we would have a meeting once we get this list of the wish list, as you're saying, and that we could all go over it together, as opposed to all of us getting it in our individual emails. But that we could then have a session sometime in, I don't know, mid-August or whatever, to go over that wish list, that we all understand what's on that piece of paper.
That's probably a little too fast. I think September is more likely.
So I was looking to be recognized to respond to our.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Retired clerk's commentary.
Happily retired clerk, but he tells me.
Yeah, sod her first.
I never saw her smile so much.
So in my, in my mind, when I hear AAB, I'm imagining the old days of we're in a hearing in Boston at Ashburton Place. And as soon as it's approved, I'd be dialing folks. So recognizing that it's a Zoom or virtual meeting, I will be emailing this group as soon as we hear what I expect to be the good news. So you'll get it as soon as we get it on the access. And then I agree on both points of, yes, the wish list, but I think for an abundance of reasons for what we have going on staff-wise, we'd rather be able to do that in September, soon after the 9th, if that works.
And that's not going to impede the first step, anyway. We all know that.
I was just thinking more, I'm sorry, Don, to interrupt, but I was just thinking more of, we're doing this as a public forum, we're doing this so that the public can hear. I think they also need to be informed that we are working on this, that we are going forward, that something is being done to prepare for the meeting that will happen in the fall, perhaps.
And Peter is also right, is what he said earlier. That aligns with his comment, which is not just the public, but the folks who are being asked to pay for this need to have some idea of what it actually looks like to finish it. And we may have to make choices, I'm not saying anything, because I haven't seen a list, but we may have to make choices, but the public has a right to know what the destination is. And that it's, that this looks like finish. As opposed to, yeah, we're almost done, but we need a couple of other things to happen. We've been doing this kind of like throwing things against the wall for a while. And that much has to happen, too. Needs to be an assurance of town meeting where this is the plan. So the first thing is to get the building open, but the second thing is, what does the plan look like to finish? I mean, finish, finish, not like take a couple of bites out of it.
So do we have any expectation as to what this level of free cash might be available at a fall town meeting? Just a guess?
None whatsoever.
Okay, so part of it could be, and I'm just making this up, but if we found out that we really had $400,000 available, and we say we can do the elevator for that, but that's all we can do, but yet we have this other money available to do siding and painting, then I think we have a little bit of a different discussion. And/or, we combine that with a great comprehensive plan and say, you know what? We got this free cash, maybe we want to consider borrowing the rest. And then if we get free cash of a significant magnitude at the annual top meeting next year, pay off the damn debt and be done with it.
I totally agree, but again, the meeting here wasn't designed to do that. The meeting, ultimately, those two things have to happen. We have to identify how much money we have, and we have to identify what the work looks like. And we compare the two and see what we can come up with in agreement about, this is what we can afford, and that's what we, that's what we want to be able to do.
And my only point is to stay flexible, because we don't know what the answer is at this point. at this point in time.
Although I would, I'm sure Jeff feels the same way. We were hesitant to wait for all of that to happen, because then nobody's driving, driving the bus. I mean.
Our clear intent.
We're here anticipating that we'll put good efforts in to be able, there were a couple of things that converge by town, by a special town meeting. Also, the fact that the select board will declare a special town meeting.
Sure.
Because that has to happen. There's a number of things that have to happen. But this was designed to be kind of an overview of, okay, so let's assume all these things happen. How does it look like? What does it look like to be able?
I think it's fair to say, this, this group, when I hear, is committed and supports finishing the project, whatever that means in detail.
Right. And again, it's not going to be in August. We'll be talking more about it. By the time Joe and administration can come up with something in September, I think it's likely they'll be clearer about the monetary situation, wouldn't it?
Correct. And, and the reason why I can say with absolute certainty today is we're still, we're, we're not even on the earliest deadline to close the books for fiscal year '24. But the interim treasurer collector, who's the lead on free cash, and then we work with the finance director, is trying to get back to the schedule that we're used to with our former finance director, Carol Coppola. And that is typically a late August to late September submission on free cash. And he's fully aware of the schedule that we have that relies upon that. So when Ed returns from vacation in the very near future, that's what he and I are going to pick up on and the status of.
And I can't emphasize enough that you're right, except that instead of doing this linearly, we're talking about stuff here that is going to happen in parallel. There are things that are, that Sean's not doing, but administration's doing monetarily. There's things that Lynn is going to come up with in anticipation that we're all going to converge at the end of something. The, the other way of doing this, we'd be adding a third or a fourth year, because it would just be linear, and it would take forever to do. So, I mean, I appreciate everybody being here, but this, that's the point, is to be able to see what it is we need to do. And, and certain things haven't happened, and they won't happen until, you know, time passes and we get to September. Linda?
Refresh my memory. At a special town meeting, can we vote on a, a piece of debt? Do a two and a half override for debt? And then.
Well, Peter brought that up. I'm not even sure that we're at that discussion point yet.
But it doesn't, but still.
We'll look into it.
There's the, there's the, well, it's the planning part, because Peter just raised, if we do debt, the question is, one of the questions that should be answered by town administration is, can we do debt at this fall town meeting, assuming it happens? And therefore, what would it take to do that, which means an election?
Jeff?
So.
So, yes.
Just, you know, when you can answer that question, get that together. I'm not looking for an answer right now, but it's just part of the planning process.
I'd like to answer right now, Mr. Chair, if I could. The answer is yes. There would be an appropriating article.
Yep.
In November. Typically, we rely upon the annual election.
Yes.
So there would have to be a conversation about the special, and that would be the question through bond council, if it could be a special town election.
Okay, thank you.
But it is normal course that you could do an appropriating question at town meeting in November that's subject to a borrowing. The borrowing happened at the next annual town election.
Okay. Just, just answering Peter's question.
I not only agree with you, but I can assure you that, that none of the folks on the select board would call a special town meeting, put an article together, and get as far as a meeting without actually looking into whether it's even possible to do it legally.
I'm trusting you to do that.
Okay. Just, I'm assuring you that they would never get that far.
Okay.
Does anybody want to bring anything else up? Because I think this is very fruitful. And to recap, you're going to do certain things, administration's going to do certain things, and then we'll all know what those are when they're finished. We'll circulate them.
The only thing positive I can say, Don, is that thank you for bringing all of this together. And the history of this town is being kept in that building, and I really think and appreciate all the work that we're doing to save the building. Thank you.
I might add that our town administrator brought up something about a week ago that is worth repeating. It, it's on the town seal.
It is.
It is part of our heritage. It's part of that marketing, if you will, but it's, it's part of the heritage of the town.
That's correct.
It's an iconic building.
It's right there.
And we're starting to, actually, we're starting to have conversations at the society about PR, getting the word out. How do we do that? So we're going to have a separate, we're going to start looking at how we do that, how we get more people there, more people interested. I mean, part of this, having all the collection downstairs will allow us to have a function room where we can have more lectures and all of that, and getting people there for lectures, maybe classes, so.
We have a whole new society board now, and we're doing a lot of brainstorming, as you will, as to what we can bring more attention to this building, more pension, more attention to our town, and the history. And the history on this cape is unbelievable. There's a lot of history here, and this is what, what we are aiming to do with this building at this point in time. So again, thank you.
I think the folks watching this will understand that we have a commitment going in. I'm going to turn to Jeff now for a final comment from him.
All I'd like to say is thank you all for being here. I'm thrilled that the stakeholder group got constituted and put together. And I'll finish by stating that I am 100% completely confident in Sean and his ability to get us from here to there. And I couldn't be happier that you're, you're, you're on our team, and you're going to be working on this project alongside all of us. So I just want to say thank you to you for that.
Assuming he gets funding.
No, he's still capable.
He's still going to work on it.
Spoken like the finance chair.
And I just want to reiterate what has been said here. Sean has done an amazing job keeping the, the building going and keeping it from deteriorating even more as much as possible. And the history of this, this town is amazing, and having it in such a historic building just adds to it. So thank you all.
Pillar of the cultural district.
Yes. I mean, I, I want to echo the Sean, and Megan, you've been helpful, too. I'm going to leave you out of this thank you bit. But, but really, yeah, Sean's people have been terrific. We call him up. He gets it done somehow. And, you know, I have, I know a little bit about some of the staffing issues, but somehow it gets done. And he's also really honest about, I can't get anybody there till tomorrow. Yeah, you know, the building isn't burning down. It's, yes, we can wait till tomorrow or the day after, but he's really good at his commitments and getting stuff. We really appreciate him and your team.
And more broadly, I want to personally express my gratitude to everybody, because everyone's displaying a commitment to seeing this thing through. Thanks for all of you for showing up, and this is not the last meeting.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Newer.
On the gab, along, let's go.
Thank you, Don.
We're a junk.